Then we can go ahead and get started. Calling to order the business meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76, roll call please.
Armenta, Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Candela, Juan.
Here.
Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please unmute yourselves so we can all join in together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now open the floor to public comments on agenda items this evening. So if you have a public comment, please feel free to go ahead and put that in our Q and A box, and we will read that into the meeting. And we will give everyone a couple minutes to do that if they so choose. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments. So we will move on to presentations.
All right, thank you. We have one presentation this evening, and that is our roadmap, our return to school third semester. Mr. Hanson is going to share his screen. So as we've shared with you since we returned from winter break, the district leadership team has been working together with staff on putting together a return to in-person learning plan based on local and state guidance. And just last week, we received some updated guidance that makes this plan today possible. So I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Gera translate our presentation for this evening. So Daisy, if you would, go ahead and just share that we're going to talk about the return to school third semester update.
Sure.
Muy buenas tardes. La presentación de hora va a ser la hoja de ruta de regreso escolar. Es una actualización del tercer trimestre y los planes del distrito escolar que tenemos de aquí en adelante.
So throughout this past year, as we've been making decisions and changes as far as what learning, remote learning, distance learning academy, as well as in-person learning looks like, we have focused on four priorities. The first one being account for the safety, health, and welfare of our students and staff. Priority two, provide rigorous and relevant teaching and learning experiences for all of our students. Three, provide social emotional learning support, connections and resources. And priority four, communicate clearly throughout the process.
Aunque siempre no era claro los planes que vamos a tener cuando venía el tiempo, nuestras prioridades de nuestras decisiones siempre son estas cuatro que ven aquí. La prioridad número uno es tener en cuenta la seguridad, la salud y bienestar de todos los estudiantes y el personal. Nuestra segunda prioridad es proporcionar experiencias de enseñanza y aprendizaje rigurosas y relevantes para todos los estudiantes. Nuestra tercera es para proporcionar apoyo de aprendizaje socioemocional, las conexiones y recursos para nuestros estudiantes y personal. Y nuestra cuarta prioridad es comunicar claramente.
So last Tuesday, a week ago, we received updated guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education, and that link is provided in this presentation, as well as it'll be provided in the staff and parent update that will be available tomorrow, the entire plan. But the three updates that affect schools the most are that social distance for in-person learning is now defined as three to six feet for students and fully vaccinated staff. That we maintain six feet is the safest distance, but schools can operate at no less than three feet in order to provide in-person learning. And school and districts should require self-certification and verification for all staff, students, and districts prior to entering the school building, which is what we currently do.
Aquí pueden ver, son las guías actualizadas de la Mesa Directiva del Estado de Illinois desde el nueve de marzo. Aquí tienen el enlace que pueden seguir. Y también mañana vamos a estar comunicando con nuestras familias y pueden ver el enlace ahí. Pero la distancia social para el aprendizaje en persona ahora se define como de tres a seis pies para los estudiantes y el personal que están completamente vacunados. Mantener seis pies sigue siendo la distancia más segura, pero las escuelas pueden operar a no menos de tres pies para proporcionar aprendizaje en persona. Y las escuelas y los distritos deben requerir la autocertificación y verificación de todo el personal, los estudiantes y los visitantes antes de entrar a los edificios.
So in addition to the updated guidance from ISB, we have and currently have in place the mitigation strategies which we will continue with for in-person learning, which is using the appropriate personal protective equipment, including face masks. Social distancing will be observed as much as possible, contact tracing in combination with isolation of those suspected or confirmed with COVID-19. And quarantine of close contacts in collaboration with the local health department. We have and will continue to increase school-wide cleaning and disinfection and maintenance for all of our environments, and also promote and adhere to hand washing and proper respiratory etiquette.
Y además, basado de la actualización de las guías que recibimos, nosotros como un distrito vamos a continuar con las estrategias de mitigación que teníamos en plazo. El uso del equipo de protección personal, los KPIs que han visto, incluyendo las máscaras. Se debe observar el distanciamiento social en la medida que sea posible, el rasteo de contactos en combinación con el aislamiento de aquellos con COVID posible o que es confirmado y cuarentena de contactos cercanos en colaboración con el Departamento de Salud Local. También hemos aumentado la limpieza y desinfección en todas las escuelas y mantenimiento de ambientes para mantener ambientes saludables y promover y adherirnos al lavar de las manos y la etiqueta respiratoria.
So is the board in our community know we sent out a declaration of intent earlier this year in January? And we had about fifty percent, a little over fifty percent in certain grade levels that wanted to return to in-person learning. So we've been doing a hybrid model based on those numbers for the past several weeks. And we sent out an updated declaration of intent for families that wanted to change or update their choices, whether to return in person or to stay as is or to return back to distance learning academy. And so as of twelve o'clock today, these are our numbers per grade level of families who have selected to remain in distance learning, remain or change to in-person learning, and then those that require our District 76 transportation. So you can see by grade level how the data is broken out. Our office staff at each of our schools are still working to connect to families that they haven't reached, but we're proud to share there's not that many of them. And then, like I said, as of today at noon, we had a hundred and thirty-two more changes of students to in-person learning and three more changed to distance learning academy.
Sorry, give me one second. I was writing down a hundred and thirty-two changed to in-person and then three to distance.
Okay, aquí pueden ver las decisiones que son basadas en los datos. Mandamos una encuesta para los padres, que es la declaración de intención. Aquí pueden ver los números de la Academia de Aprendizaje. Tenemos a trescientos quince estudiantes para aprendizaje híbrido en persona. Tenemos, perdón, para el aprendizaje en persona voy a tener que cambiar esto. Es quinientos diecisiete, y los estudiantes que requieren transportación del Distrito 76 son trescientos treinta y uno. Algo que acaba también de mencionar la doctora Sharmel Duvese. Y esos son los números basados desde las doce de la tarde hoy. Y luego también los datos de hoy, cien treinta y dos más estudiantes decidieron mandar a sus estudiantes en persona, y tres cambiaron a distancia academia de aprendizaje a distancia.
So based on the updated guidance that we received from ISB and also the data that we've collected from our families, the updated declaration of intent, what we're proposing tonight on behalf of the district leadership team is a updated third trimester teaching and learning proposal and plan that would take place from April twelfth through June fourth, which is the year of the year. And what we're proposing is that for those families that are either staying in or choosing to come into in-person learning, that we return physically to school buildings and classrooms five days a week, all day, follow the typical school day schedule. The instructional delivery would be live instruction simultaneous in alignment with remote learning students. And then also maintain our current mitigation strategies to promote those health and safety guidelines.
Y de nuevo, eso es de parte de lo que está recomendando el liderazgo del equipo, el equipo de liderazgo del distrito, el Plan de Enseñanza y Aprendizaje para el Tercer Trimestre. Esto sería, se pondría en efectivo el doce de abril hasta el cuatro de junio. Es aprendizaje en persona, regresar físicamente a los edificios escolares o a los salones de clases cinco días de la semana, seguir el horario escolar normal, la entrega de instrucción sería instrucción en vivo simultánea y alineación con el aprendizaje remoto, y mantener las estrategias de mitigación, las reglas de salud y seguridad.
We're going to continue to provide remote learning, which we call the Distance Learning Academy, for students that are choosing to stay at home or stay at remote learning. And they will continue to receive full-time distance learning through their assigned school. They will also continue to follow the typical school day schedule. They will not physically attend school, but will participate in school-based learning virtually from home. And the instructional delivery will continue either with live virtual instruction simultaneously and in alignment with the in-person learning students.
Y lo que seguirá también siendo parte de nuestro, de nuestro plan de estudios es el aprendizaje remoto o la academia de aprendizaje a distancia, que es recibir al aprendizaje a distancia de tiempo completo a través de la escuela asignada, seguir el horario típico del día escolar, y no asistirán físicamente a la escuela, pero participarán los estudiantes en aprendizaje basado en la escuela virtualmente desde su hogar. Y la entrega de instrucción sería en vivo, instrucción virtual, simultánea, y en alineación con el aprendizaje en persona.
So this is just for everyone's information as we follow throughout the school year is just our schools, each of our schools and their school day schedules. And we will continue maintaining and follow those schedules for the remainder of the third trimester.
Aquí puede ver a los horarios del día escolar del Distrito 76 por cada escuela, y esto lo vamos a seguir hasta los últimos, hasta que termine el tercer trimestre.
So what our updated schedule is we're proposing is that concurrent learning and curriculum for both in-person and remote learners. Students we taught by their regular classroom teachers, and if you see there's an asterisk there, this may affect a few classes if they're not taught by the regular classroom teacher. So if it does affect those students, that principals will be reaching out to those families if needed. Our K through fourth grade in-person learning, the technology, they will keep their devices in school and will follow the dynamic IT protocol that's available not only in this presentation, but also on our website. And then consistent weekly schedule for students and family planning. The third trimester calendar has been updated, is included here also on our website starting tomorrow once the board plan be available. Friday. And following the typical school day schedule will be consistent for five days a week.
Aquí puede ver el horario actualizado para el Plan de Estudios. El Plan de Estudios y Aprendizaje sería concurrente para los estudiantes en persona y a distancia, quiere decir serían iguales. Los estudiantes serán enseñados por sus maestros o maestros de clases regulares. Aquí puede ver una estrella. Esto es por si acaso ha cambiado o va a cambiar la maestra o el maestro. Cada padre o familia sería contactado y vamos a comunicarnos, estaremos en comunicación con ustedes. La tecnología de aprendizaje en persona para los grados de kindergarten hasta el cuarto mantendrán sus dispositivos en la escuela y seguirán los protocolos dinámicos del Departamento de Tecnología. Los horarios semanales serían consistentes para los estudiantes para ayudar a las familias con planificaciones que tienen. Y aquí puede ver también el calendario del tercer trimestre. De nuevo, vamos a mandar la comunicación para que puedan ver el enlace de este calendario.
Again, also based on the updated guidance and students returning for five days a week, there's been a couple of changes made at each of our buildings for lunch recess and choir. So I'm going to have each of the principals please speak to those. And then if you would just speak, each principal, and then Daisy can translate your portion. So lunch recess, let's start with Dr. Fredericks and Diamond Lake.
Good evening. As Dr. Sharmel Lewis said, we are going to do our best to minimize changes to our schedule or to teachers. But one thing that we do know for sure is we will want to split our first and second grade lunch period. So right now, the first and second graders who have been attending have been attending recess and lunch at the same time. Now that we have additional students, we will have second graders having lunch first while the first graders are at recess. Then we will transition and the students will go out different doors or come in different doors, and we will have the first graders have lunch after recess. Mr. Prabowo?
Oh, sorry. De parte de la escuela de Diamond Lake, lo que acaba de compartir la doctora Fredericks es queremos dejar los horarios para que no cambien tanto. Las únicas cosas que ahorita están cambiando, que la escuela seguirá haciendo lo mismo. El periodo de almuerzo de primer y segundo grado se dividirá. Esto quiere decir que los del segundo grado tendrán el almuerzo primero y luego los del grado primero tendrán el recreo primero. Todos los estudiantes saldrán y entrarán de diferentes puertas. Y de nuevo, vamos a mantener las guías de sanitación cuando esto pase.
Good evening, everyone. The intermediate school schedule will stay the same as it was built to absorb any changes that we were going to throw at it going forward. So with that in mind, operationally, we're going to look the same with the exception that we will need to split our lunch periods as well, just because of the overall numbers in the lunch room at one time. So what we will do is at each grade level, we'll have like half the students go to lunch at one time. The group goes to recess, and we will just swap them halfway through, and we'll do that all three lunch periods. The lunch periods themselves will not change times.
Lo que acaba de compartir el director Prabowo, también no querían cambiar todos los horarios, pero como estamos aumentando los, el número de los estudiantes que tenemos en las escuelas, puede ver que cada periodo de almuerzo y por grado se dividirá. Un grupo come primero mientras que el otro tiene recreo y luego cambiarán. Ninguno de los grupos van a estar en, los que están divididos no van, no van a estar juntos en la cafetería para evitar tantos estudiantes en un lugar. Pero de nuevo, van a estar cambiando los que entran y salen de la cafetería.
Good evening. At the middle school, to echo the first two schools that went, we will also split our lunch periods so that half our students will have our version of recess. The other has in the cafeteria.
Igual que la escuela de Diamond Lake y la escuela intermedia, cada periodo se dividirá para el almuerzo y por grado. Un grupo come primero mientras que el otro tiene recreo y luego cambian.
And then just to speak to Band and Choir specifically, we will run Band and Choir as they have been, and we will continue the programs. Locations for Band and Choir will be subject to change in order to accommodate all students and adhere to the guidance we need to follow.
Y luego para el tema de banda y coro, para la escuela secundaria, las ubicaciones de banda y coro estarán sujetas a cambios para acomodar a todos los estudiantes y cumplir con las, con las guías o las reglas estatales y locales.
And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Eric Rogers.
Thank you. The district has reported a special waiver that allowed our district classified as a laboratory as well to administer the Abbott BioNex Now COVID antigen test. So it's a fifteen-minute rapid task that we're now allowed to distribute to symptomatic staff and students. So there'll be a parental consent form that will be distributed prior to administering the test, but it's going to allow us to keep more students in the building rather than having them isolated at home.
Lo que acaba de comunicar el señor, el señor Rogers, es que ahora podemos tener, ahora vamos a tener la prueba de COVID, que es un examen que es rápido, rápido de quince minutos. Esto dará la oportunidad, oportunidad de la prueba de COVID al personal, que son sintomáticos y los, y o los estudiantes usando la prueba antihigiénica BioNex Now de COVID-19. Pero para los estudiantes se requiere el consentimiento del, eso requiere el consentimiento del personal o de los padres o tutoros de los estudiantes antes que se pueda administrar eso.
So as we're looking at important data for you, so tonight we're asking the board to take action on the third trimester teaching and learning plan and proposal as we're presenting tonight. And then, starting March twenty-ninth, when we return from spring break through April ninth, we want to continue with our current AV hybrid model just to make sure for potential spring break travel, if people need to quarantine, that they're able to do so without disrupting the learning plan and schedule. And then what we will continue to maintain our facility for education students to come in four days a week, just as they've been doing throughout since February sixteenth. And then, starting April twelfth, as presented in this plan, which is Monday through Friday, June fourth, which is the last day of the District Seventy-Six school year calendar, students return to five days a week for in-person learning, depending on what they selected. And then those are just our three resources, our important resources that we've put together as a district that will be available tomorrow in the family letter as well as on our website. Roadmap, the new calendar that shares five days a week for, excuse me, five days a week for in-person learning, and then also the updated health and safety plan.
Y ahora, mirando hacia adelante, en el día de hoy estamos pidiendo la acción de nuestra junta educativa sobre el plan y propuesta de enseñanza y aprendizaje del tercer trimestre tal como se presentó hoy. Para los días futuros, para el veintinueve de marzo hasta el nueve de abril, nuestros planes es continuar con el modelo híbrido de AIDE actualmente que tenemos debido a los posibles viajes de vacaciones de primavera y mantener a los estudiantes de nuestra academia facilitada a distancia y los estudiantes de educación especial a cuatro días de la semana. Eso continuará como actualmente lo tenemos. Y luego para el doce de abril hasta el cuatro de junio, nuestros planes es detener a los estudiantes que decidieron regresar al aprendizaje en persona, sería cinco días a la semana o continúan con su aprendizaje a remoto. Y aquí puede ver los enlaces actualizados, que es nuestra hoja de ruta de regreso escolar para el tercer trimestre, nuestro calendario de tercer trimestre también, y nuestro plan de salud y seguridad del tercer trimestre, que todos son actualizados. El enlace está aquí, lo vamos a tener en nuestro sitio web, y es algo que también vamos a comunicar con nuestras familias el día de mañana.
And that concludes our presentation for this evening. Are there any questions or comments from the board? And the second attachment in your packet is also the complete Illinois State Board of Education revised health guidance for schools. That's included for your review.
Hi, I think I asked this last time, just going to ask again. The deadline for closing out the survey results is that, I know you received some updates today. Are you taking that through today, through the end of the week? Is there a hard deadline?
Yeah, we, we closed it yesterday at six o'clock.
Okay.
As I shared earlier, as of noon today, we had eight hundred and thirty-two responses.
Okay.
That office staff are still continuing to, I believe that is the majority of our students in my current town now.
By the way, you're breaking up a little bit in your, in some of your recent responses. I'll say with that number, so eight thirty-two responses so far. The, how does that compare to the overall number of students that we have registered?
Julie, can principals each respond to how many families, or Mr. Hanson, you want to tell me how many we have registered? Any families who still have left to, Ms. Lozada, by school, please?
The intermediate school, we have eighteen students. We're still awaiting responses on.
The middle school, we have seven students that we're still waiting on.
And Diamond Lake, we have about twelve families that we're still waiting on.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Going over to Mr. Rogers. The, on the COVID testing, who would be administering, first question is, are you going to secure the the consent form ahead of time or only on a, on a need-to basis, on a case-by-case basis?
That's a great question. We were talking about that internally today. I think at this point, we're just going to distribute it on an as-needed basis. Because again, it's a, it's a, you have to be symptomatic. And rather than, you know, sending the student home right away with these symptoms and, you know, requesting they come back after, you know, the ten-day period, we're able to test them. Once their symptoms go away, they can come back at a more rapid pace. So it'll be a Google form that we can distribute right to parents. They'll fill it out, and same thing, we'd be calling home anyway to get all the parents to pick up these students. So it'll kind of be a fluid situation, but we think it'll work pretty straightforward seamlessly.
But as a, as a planned reaction to, let's say you have a student that is symptomatic and someone identifies a student symptomatic or the student says, I'm not feeling well, they have a temperature. What, take me through that, what happens in the first couple of hours?
If a student comes in and is exhibiting symptoms?
Yeah, it's in the classroom, and all of a sudden, he or she determines, or the teacher determines the student is having some issues, and the first thing they'll probably do is take a temperature, and you find that temperature's elevated and so forth. What, what's, what's the course of action there?
So the course of action is depending on what school, whether you go see Nurse Julia or Christina. They'd go through the questions, see what the symptoms the students are exhibiting. Like you mentioned, they'd take a temperature at that point. And if they're exhibiting any of those symptoms related to COVID-19, they'd be isolated in one of our building isolation rooms. From that point, they would, prior to having this test available, they would contact the parent or guardian, let them know that they have within an hour to pick up that student. They'd remain isolated until the parent arrives, use them to the parent, and just give them the guidance on when they can return to school and what the criteria they must meet. So now what they do is they contact the parent and say, you know, hi, we have this other option available. We have in-house COVID testing. We're sending you this consent form to fill out. If you consent, it could either be done verbally over the phone, and our nurse would fill out the form, or it could just be sent directly through email, which will mostly apply to staff, just because it's going to be easily accessible. We'd administer the COVID test. It's got a fifteen-minute response time. And they're all free from the Lake County Health Department, a very, very cool test. And we'd get those results back, report them back to the parent. And then if the test came back negative, we could say, all right, once your symptoms subside, I believe it was a seventy-two-hour period, you know, say for fever to subside there. They could then come back to school rather than having to isolate for the entire quarantine period. So it just allows kids to come back in faster and vice versa with staff as well.
Thanks so much.
If you, and if Mr. Lozada wouldn't mind, just if you didn't catch the first part of the questions, would you mind translating the question and then the responses for us? So I believe the first one was how many families are still, are still waiting to hear from? About twelve at Diamond Lake, eighteen at the intermediate school, and seven at the middle school. And then I will do my best to try to capture what Mr. Rogers said.
Yeah, I can, I can go ahead. I was taking notes. I'm sorry. Okay.
Nuestra junta educativa también tenía preguntas para nuestra administración, lo que acaba también de compartir nuestros directores y la doctora Sharmel Duvese. Queríamos saber, cerramos la encuesta ayer y quería, el señor Lozada tenía pregunta de cuántas familias todavía necesita. No, no hemos escuchado de ellos. De la parte de la escuela intermedia tenemos dieciocho familias, de la parte de nuestra escuela secundaria de Wastok, son siete. De la parte de nuestra escuela secundaria de West Oak, son siete familias y de la escuela de Diamond Lake, son 12. La segunda pregunta era, ¿cómo vamos a tener el examen de prueba de COVID en nuestras escuelas? El señor Lozada preguntó cómo vamos a dar el conocimiento para nuestros padres. ¿Se los vamos a dar a todos o sería caso por caso? Y lo que acaba de mencionar el señor Rogers es que sería por caso por caso. Como si un estudiante tiene síntomas, las guías que vamos a seguir es que les vamos a llamar a nuestras, a las familias, a los padres o tutores. Los estudiantes van a ir con nuestras enfermeras. Ahí les van a tomar la temperatura, van a estar aislados. Y luego, les vamos a dar la opción a los padres que tenemos el examen de prueba de COVID que de nuevo es 15 minutos y es gratis de parte del Departamento de Salud del Condado de Lake. Y luego, si el estudiante sale negativo, la prueba sale negativa, este, tiene que tener 72 horas que no tengan síntomas y pueden regresar a la clase. Pero de nuevo, todo sería comunicado con, entre familia, a los padres o los tutores de ese estudiante.
Thank you. Any other questions from our board?
Yes, I had a couple of quick questions. In looking at the numbers on the slide that had indicated that we have 517 students returning for in-person learning, then you had mentioned 132 were added. Is that in the 517 number? Are you talking about 132 additional from who are currently attending in the hybrid version of in-person learning?
The number, the 132, the 132 has been added in that data.
Okay. And then, I, oh, and then I was going to ask as well, how many additional students are asking for transportation? So does that impact our bus routes?
Yeah, Julie, I don't know if I can answer that exactly.
Oh, sure, no, sure, just a ballpark is fine.
Yeah, again, just assuming everyone is taking additional transportation. Our bus company has been prepared for this the entire year. So basically, we've routed all students possible when the year started. So we have appropriate routes measured out. All we're going to be doing is plugging these students back on the bus. So it's really going to have, you know, pretty negligible impact on getting these students routed quickly. Sorry, Eric, what did you say?
It's 15 additional students.
Only 15 additional attended the bus?
Based off of last one we presented.
Okay.
Okay, that's obviously minimal.
Okay, la señora Géo, nuestra presidenta de la junta educativa también preguntó. Durante la presentación, la doctora Chano Duves mencionó que tenemos 517 estudiantes que decidieron regresar en persona y mencionó que 132 estudiantes fueron añadidos. Esos 132 están incluidos en el número de 517. La segunda pregunta de la parte de la señora Géo es si la transportación sería impactada con el aumento de los estudiantes regresando a, regresando a la escuela. Y el señor Rogers y el señor Hanson mencionaron que solamente vamos a aumentar 15 estudiantes más que necesitaron transportación de parte del Distrito 76. Pero es algo que ya teníamos en cuenta de parte de la transportación.
Thank you, Daisy.
25, I looked at the wrong column.
Okay.
Perdón, fueron 25, no 15, fueron 25 estudiantes que necesitan la transportación.
And then I had one last quick question. I saw that IDPH is no longer recommending doing any of the temperature checks at school. And I didn't see that mentioned specifically. It just mentioned that we were going to have the self-certification. So I wanted to clarify, are we, so are we no longer requiring students to do the temperature checks when they enter school and staff and everyone else?
We're going to still keep that safety measure in place.
Okay, and then as a follow-up to that, have we, has that caught any students or staff or visitors to the building with an elevated temperature?
I believe we had one at the intermediate school, but then we actually rechecked with two other temperature guns. Sorry, I don't know if you can hear me with my mask on.
We can hear you.
They came off the bus, we temperature checked, it ran high, and we double-checked with two other guns and she was fine. And so we had her checked out by the nurse and everything was fine.
We had the same thing with one student at the middle school.
At the, we have not had any issues at the primary building.
Thank you.
Otra pregunta de parte de la señora Géo, nuestra presidenta de la junta educativa, fue que el Departamento de Salud de El Don Noel no está requiriendo los chequeos de temperatura. Quería saber si es algo que nuestro distrito todavía estamos requiriendo y la respuesta es que sí, todavía vamos a estar dando el chequeo de temperaturas en cada de nuestros edificios. También preguntó que si hemos, si hemos tenido unos estudiantes o unas personas con temperatura elevada de la escuela intermedia de West Oak, que el señor Cabo dijo que sí teníamos a un estudiante, pero después le chequearon su, le mostraron su temperatura de nuevo dos diferentes veces con la enfermera y todo estaba bien. La misma situación pasó en la escuela secundaria y en la escuela de Diamond Lake no han tenido una persona con la temperatura alta.
Mr. Preble and Mr. Cunningham, you both mentioned that so grades three to eight would need to split their lunch periods. Can you talk about how that would impact the time that students would have to eat lunch? Does that cut their current lunchtime in half? Is that how that would work?
At the intermediate school, it'd be minimal, possibly five minutes. Because basically what's going to happen is, you know, half the group's going to be eating, half the group's going to be at recess. We will need time to clean up in between. But that being said, we are splitting at the intermediate school, we're splitting our lunches because the numbers are just over what our current capacity is that we're set up for. So when you think of it in that terms, when we, when we break the groups in half, the amount of space that's going to be utilized and taken up is going to be, you know, very minimal to clean up. So it should be a quick transition. So I'm anticipating, hopefully, we're trimming off possibly five minutes on either side of that.
At the middle school, yeah, it would shorten the amount of time that students would eat. However, we are able to do a couple of different things because we can fit most students in the cafeteria with the new numbers. Regardless, we're able to, those that take longer to eat, they'll let's take their time. They're able to eat in that first group and are able to stay through for the second group. And as we discover that for any new students, we will allow as much time as students need to finish their lunch and be able to make sure they're on the right half of moving and switching for lunch. The vast majority of our middle schoolers are done eating within 15 minutes. It's just that good. They have to get it, get it down. It's delicious.
Okay, la, una, perdón, la pregunta de la señora Juan fue sobre el almuerzo para los estudiantes porque mencionaron de parte de la escuela intermedia de la escuela secundaria que iban a dividir el tiempo de los almuerzos. Quería saber si esto cortaría el tiempo para los estudiantes de comer? Si sería menos tiempo de parte de la escuela intermedia. El señor Cabo dijo que sería aproximadamente cinco minutos. Y eso sería para controlar el espacio para, para la seguridad de los estudiantes y también para dar tiempo de limpieza para cuando entre el siguiente grupo de la escuela secundaria. También, este, miraremos, este, que es menos tiempo para los estudiantes. Pero de todos modos, este, con los números que tenemos para la escuela secundaria, todos los estudiantes van a caber en nuestra cafetería. Pero los estudiantes, de todos modos, terminan de comer, duran como 15 minutos para comer y terminan porque la comida de nuestra escuela es tan buena así.
If I'd like to say, I think it's wonderful that we're able to safely plan for a return to five days of instruction in person for the families that choose it. I think it's a really great plan to go forward with this. My questions. With instruction being delivered simultaneously to in-person students and remote students and that continuing now, what, how's that going current in the hybrid model? What challenges have been identified? What successes have there been? And what more do the students and the staff need to support this model? You know, that, I'm sure there must be challenges from both the student and the teacher end of it. And what support can the board back and provide to help students and staff be more successful in this, in this model?
Would you guys like to answer by school or do you want to answer, Steve, do you want to summarize it?
I think that the principals would be best in responding because they see the, you know, the inner workings each team.
We're going to answer by school, so we'll start with Diamond Lake, intermediate and middle school.
I think the most important thing that our students are kind of fitting from is our extremely dedicated staff at Diamond Lake School. They have gone so far above and beyond to make sure that students who are hybrid learning as well as in-person learning have their needs met and they problem solve on a regular basis and truly work as a team. When we sat down to plan for the hybrid learning, the teams were able to independently decide what is best for their teams and then we talked through it. And that's why in each of the grade levels, it looks a little different. It is definitely challenging to teach, you know, larger groups of kindergarten students, but they've done an admirable job and they continue to problem solve. I think one of the most important things at Diamond Lake has been that our teachers have acted as a team. So some of our resource staff is teaching right alongside or right with or partnered with our general classrooms so that they're acting as well as, as just teachers. So we have appreciated the support from the leadership team as well as the board to allow the teachers to do what they do. It's, you know, a lot of making sure our little ones are entertained and excited about learning and they just keep going and we appreciate all of the resources. You know, if we reach out to technology to ask for different resources or if we reach out for anything, we've been extremely supported. So I guess from Diamond Lake, we would just appreciate you continuing that support and appreciating our fantastic staff.
Can I ask, Daisy, would you mind translating Mr. Candela's question? And then by school, what the responses are before we get too far ahead?
Yes, thank you. El señor Candela acaba de preguntar a nuestra administración. Primero dio, este, les dio gracias por poder producir un plan para poder tener a nuestros estudiantes cinco días dentro de nuestros edificios seguramente para nuestras familias que eligieron eso. Pero su pregunta para la administración era, ¿cómo les está yendo a nuestras maestras y maestros durante este tiempo con los estudiantes que están híbridos, que están dentro de las escuelas pero que también están a remotos? ¿Qué apoyo necesita, necesitan las maestras y maestros, el personal y nuestra administración de parte de la junta educativa para poder apoyarlos mejor? De parte de la escuela de Diamond Lake, la doctora Fredericks dijo que por ahorita los beneficios son que las maestras y los maestros se reúnen como equipos de liderazgo. Ellas y ellos tienen sus reuniones. Si hay problemas, este, miran a los desafíos y ven cómo lo pueden arreglar. Nada más siguiendo que los estudiantes estén entretenidos también, que tengan esos apoyos y esos recursos. Y ella también dio gracias al Departamento de Tecnología. Si las maestras, maestros tienen un problema, una pregunta, ellos siempre están disponibles. O nada más preguntó que sigan apoyando a los departamentos de esa manera.
At West Oak Intermediate, I couldn't be more proud of the efforts and work the staff has put into pull off the simultaneous instruction like they've been doing. Successes are that engagement is way up. And that's with not only our kids that are here in person, but the kids that are also remote too. Because the way the lessons are designed and teachers are doing a wonderful job incorporating both sets of students to collaborate together. And I would say that really the biggest difference between being in person and being remote at this point is depending on what the activity is, obviously, we have a few more hands-on things going on in the classroom. But the lessons have been designed so that those students are working with the kids remotely to incorporate them into the lesson. They're showing them the things. And the only difference has been that the kids at home aren't physically, you know, touching a lab experiment or possibly holding a book in their hand, but they're able to use other things to do that. You know, challenges are what they've always been and that's with, you know, technology where at home maybe we have students that are having trouble staying connected sometimes. So then the teacher has to pause to address some of those things and those things happen. I was having a conversation with some of my staff yesterday and today and telling them, "I know they're, they're working super hard to make this look good, but when you walk into the room and you see what they're doing, they're really making it look easy." And we can't forget that they're pioneering this thing right now. They, this is, they've never done it before. And in a few weeks, they really look smoother there. And I think it's been incredibly awesome to see them do that.
En resumen, que quisiera dar la traducción de todo lo que acaba de mencionar el señor Cabo. Este, pero a lo largo del rato, él dice que está muy orgulloso de todas las maestras y maestros, todo el personal de parte de la escuela intermedia. Los éxitos que han tenido es que la participación ha aumentado. Lo que puede ver de parte de las maestras y maestros es que el plan de estudios que ellas y ellos hacen, que aunque estén unos de los estudiantes dentro de las escuelas, las maestras y maestros son creativos y hacen los planes de estudios para que los estudiantes que estén dentro de la escuela estén trabajando con los estudiantes que están a remoto. Las maestras y los maestros lo hacen ver muy, muy fácil, pero él sabe que es la primera vez que ellas están, que ellas y ellos estén experimentando con esto, pero lo están siendo posible y es algo que él puede ver. Y de nuevo, uno de los desafíos que podemos ver a largo plazo es que algunos de los estudiantes tienen problemas con el internet en casa y las maestras y maestros tienen que pausar a veces, pero esas son las cosas que están pasando por ahorita. Pero esos son los éxitos y desafíos de parte de la escuela intermedia.
At the middle school, I'll echo what Dr. Fredericks and Mr. Preble shared. Our middle school staff has been absolutely incredible, what the resilience they've shown, the ingenuity, the creativity. It's been wonderful. They, some of these teachers see up to 100 kids a day. And it's extremely impressive how they know students as individuals and they're very concerned with the, and they speak about each student as an individual and wanting to connect with them, whether they're remote or in person. And with that, they're, they always are very concerned that they're being able to attend to both the students that are remote and in the classroom. The way that we have designed our focus is that, similar to what Mr. Preble shared, we focus on their having lessons that work remotely so that students that are engaged in the classroom as well as at home are able to access the same information and lesson. So we really, I really appreciate that question about asking how the board can support. Certainly, yet we found that as more students come in, that's been extremely important for them to have that consistency. If they are electing to come in, a lot of times the students that are coming in, they really do need to be here. So just supporting what we're doing so far and including what we're presenting tonight is extremely helpful and beneficial. Also something that you, that the board already approved has been extremely key during this time, which has been instructional coaching. It could not have been more well-timed, whether it's our instructional coach working on engagement or it's our technology coach to be able to help us navigate a number of great resources that the board's provided, whether it's review Sonics or other things, has been extremely, it has allowed teachers to hit the ground running on technology or at least walking on technology when that would not have been the case had they not been here in person. So that's been extreme. We're very grateful for that. And we're grateful to have more students involved. The more students we can have in the building, that's wonderful. And that allows us again to focus on those that need the support here to stay engaged. And the ones that are at home, we're able to be more, provide more into the building. And the ones that are at home, we're able to be more, provide more individualized support.
De parte de la escuela secundaria, de nuevo, este es un resumen, pero de nuevo siempre estamos disponibles si tienen alguna pregunta. Pero de parte de la escuela secundaria, el señor Cunningham también le da muchas gracias a las maestras y maestros por su creatividad. Pues ellos y ellas pueden ver hasta 100 estudiantes por día, pero de todos modos tienen una conexión individualmente con cada estudiante. Nos enfocamos también en, en los plan de estudios que trabajan con los estudiantes que están a remoto. Y también aprecia a nuestro, nuestra junta educativa por, por el apoyo y por la pregunta de, de cómo ellos pueden seguir el apoyo. Y dio un ejemplo de también, tenemos maestras y maestros instruccionales que ellos, este, les dan desarrollo profesional a los otros maestras, maestros y maestras. Por ejemplo, los Viewsonics, que son las pantallas que usan en clases. Esto da la habilidad a nuestros maestros y maes, maestras y maestros a seguir aprendiendo de cómo usar nuestra tecnología durante este, durante esto, este tiempo.
If I can just add to one of the things to Mr. Candela's question. I think what you've done as a board is approve our adjusted calendar. We were able to change all of our late starts to early releases, which essentially, you know, doubled teacher time to plan and to train and take it opportunity, take advantage of the opportunities of instructional coaching or any type of professional development, whether it came to technology resources or further articulation with their grade level. I think that definitely helped as well as we've restructured our institute days. One coming up this Friday as well as the one in May to just focus on them working with each other and reflecting on what went well and what they need to continue to focus on, not only as a team, but for our students and what skills they need to work on together.
Lo que acaba de mencionar la doctora Charmaduez es también, ella quiere dar gracias por, por aprobar los cambios a nuestro calendario escolar. Ahora puede ver que tenemos días de, que los estudiantes salen temprano, pero esto da la oportunidad para los maestros y maes, las maestras y los maestros poder participar en desarrollo profesional por nivel de, de grado. También tenemos días de institutos para maestras y maestros, que esto da la habilidad para que ellas y ellos trabajen juntos, puedan reflejar y seguir sus planes de estudios para nuestros estudiantes.
I have a quick question. I'm not sure if this was already discussed. I, my computer had a glitch on it. But I was wondering how our vaccination efforts going for the teachers right now?
Right now, I think as I shared earlier, like we asked them in a survey, I believe it was at the previous board meeting, that we have about 95% of our staff will be vaccinated by spring break. And there was a few that chose not to answer.
Thank you.
La señora Sullivan acaba de preguntar de, de las vacunas para el personal. En la, en la anterior reunión que teníamos de la junta educativa, teníamos la encuesta, presentamos la encuesta de maestras y maestros quien, 95% de ellos dijeron que iban a estar, mencionaron que iban a estar vacunados después de las vacaciones de primavera y el resto del, del personal pusieron que no, no iban a comentar sobre eso.
So if there are no more questions, that concludes our presentation for this evening. And later on in the agenda, we're going to ask the board to take action on the presentation proposal that we shared tonight.
Como ya no hay preguntas ni comentarios sobre esta presentación, ahorita en la agenda van a presentar esto para acción.
Okay, thank you everyone. And I wanted to just kind of echo what the board members said tonight during their questions and comments. And thank the district leadership team for all of the time they've spent on this plan. And also really thank our teachers and staff for their flexibility and all of their hard work this year. We know it's been extremely challenging and we've really seen through your efforts. You're really giving our students the best experience possible, whether they're remote or in person. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we reiterated that and thanked all of you again. Um, we will now be moving on to our business agenda for the evening. We have a number of items that are up for action. The first item for action on the business agenda is the omnibus vote agenda. Do we have any discussion on this before we move to vote? I'm seeing heads shaking, no. Okay, then we will move to vote. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voting on, and voted on separately. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Lozada.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Armenta.
Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion is approved. Moving on to personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one leave of absence, one resignation and one informational position change. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Candela.
Yes.
Lozada.
Yes.
Armenta.
Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is approved. Moving on to item C, which is the TIF resolution. At our last meeting, Mr. Hauptman had asked that we present a resolution in support of the TIF this evening. Before we go ahead and vote on that, I just wanted to open the floor to any discussion that we might have.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of thoughts on the, on the TIF. I got together with Eric and Bavna and Amanda from the village. I guess it was last week to kind of go over some questions that I had. And I guess when I look at like this TIF, I kind of, I'm trying to look at it through a lens of like, how does it impact our teachers and our students and our taxpayers? And if it benefits all three, then we should absolutely, you know, support it. But it seems like in this case, it seems like the best case scenario is that it will at least slightly increase our class sizes, which I don't think benefits the teachers or the students. And, you know, guys, again, in the best case scenario, you know, it nominally costs our taxpayers money for the next 23 years. And then we get the tax benefit after those 23 years are over. So, um, you know, and then in the worst case scenario, it costs us money for the next 23 years. And then it costs, and then it will take a number of years afterwards to recoup that money. So like personally, you know, being a resident that lives in the area, I mean, obviously, I think, I think most anyone agrees that like having that area redeveloped is, is a good thing for the community. But as a school board, I just don't know that it's something that we should like, thought of our way to support when it could cost us, you know, money over the next two decades. And then that said, you know, I got this in the mail recently that I asked the constitution and they were talking about, it happened to be open to the TIF financing. Talking about like their, their position on it. And even they support changes that limit the use of TIF financing for new residential developments. And it's pretty much for the same reason, you know, it's, it costs the school districts money upfront. And like philosophically, it's like, why should a low-income school district kind of take the risk or pick up the tab to facilitate this development? When, you know, when there are other ways to, to finance the, the development, I guess.
And if I can just, the third attachment in your board packet is the questions that Mrs. Sullivan had presented to Amanda prior to our meeting. And then our, the district as well as the village's responses in there. So there's a summary of our meeting attached from March 11.
Eric, can I get you to clarify like two things for me? Based on the questions or the comments that Nikki just made, because I thought they were useful comments. And in regards to whether or not this is going to cost our taxpayers money, having the TIF in that particular area and freezing the EAV, it's my understanding that that would not result in additional taxes to our current taxpayers. Is that correct?
Are you asking if, if the TIF passed, would that cost our taxpayers anything?
Correct.
I know the taxes essentially would be frozen at the level that they are now. At least if the tax that the district receives, it's any new additional EAV that's generated from the TIF would go to the village in this case to redevelop that land. So.
So basically, if nothing happened, we, even if the TIF passed, we'd be status quo there. Assuming the EAV is not going to appreciate it and that, you know, we're not necessarily going to see development just because we haven't.
Correct. And if the TIF did, we wouldn't be seeing any increase at this point either based on the development.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify the taxpayer impact. Thank you.
I just see it differently. It just, number one, it's not going to cost us tax money. Because right now it's a relatively blighted area that's not giving us tax income. Number two, we all, we've known for years that this was pretty well the last area that could be built on. So from my point of view, it's not a surprise. This was the last parcel of land that, that could have been built on for res, that, that was, that could have been, that could have had residential units built on. We've, we've known, we've known that as a board for years and years. Because we're, we're so landlocked, this was it. And we've always known you could only put so many units there. And, and I just don't agree with shutting that out and, and, and delaying development of it because we don't want to add any more students to the district. Whereas this could be a positive for the community. I, I just see it different. I just see it differently and, you know, I'll go along with whatever the board decides. Once we, you know, after we vote, but, but right now I just see it differently. So, and where I'm coming from is, I'm not saying that it's like going to cost us tax and revenue coming in. It's just going to cost us some money going out. So in terms of buses, in terms of, you know, the additional students.
Sure, but if we had students that moved into the district from neighborhoods where, you know, maybe it's a neighborhood that mainly has, you know, retired couples living there and, and those houses turn over and have younger families, we would still have kids coming in that way, you know.
Right, but.
We have that all the time.
The difference here though is like, say we're building a, a new neighborhood somewhere, you know, you get tax, you get, you know, tax of revenue coming from all of the different homes. And that covers, you know, all the students that are coming in. Whereas here, we are covering all of the, the new students and we're not getting any additional revenue from the development for 23 years.
Sure, but if we don't develop that area, nothing happens. So I, I guess I just, I under, I don't, I understand the, the impact that TIFs have on the school district. And I think in certain cases, depending on the TIF and depending on the area and depending on, you know, what is being built there, it could have a significant impact. I just don't think that this particular TIF is going to have a significant impact on the district. And in looking at the existing TIF one and TIF two, it really hasn't impacted our district at all. And so.
Well, they haven't. They haven't really had much going on.
No, and I mean, there's no guarantee that these areas will significantly develop either. I just think that with the fact that our enrollment projections have been going down, we can accommodate, you know, about 63 kids. I don't know that that's going to make it, really make an impact.
Yeah, and that's a good point. If one of the attachments is the six-day enrollment overview, if I understand that right, you can look at those numbers and then we've been reducing our enrollment for the, you know, since 2015, if not before that. So we can see the steady decline of the, the numbers. So for me, I, I think there's a opportunity there to make up some of those numbers. And, and one, one thing that I really want to clarify, regardless of how we vote tonight, I think the answer is yes, the TIF will pass. Our vote here doesn't necessarily cancel the effort into pass the TIF, right? So it's just.
It's up to the, the village board, however their trustees vote.
Okay. And send everyone else before us has voted for it and that includes the other districts, correct?
Yes, but they don't, for this kind of TIF, they don't need our approval.
Okay, right.
So this would just be, this would just be a statement of support from our board. Basically like the other taxing bodies have essentially given through their vote earlier.
And in some ways, this, this indicates how welcoming we are as a district to the last bit of area for development. And you know, we have enough, we have, we have, are, we have enough struggle as it is as a district. And, you know, we've done such a good job of, of, of strengthening our reputation. The, the last thing we need is to, is to have anything that, that could unintentionally tarnish it. And we just don't need it. And, and, and it's not going to change anything. And, and we certainly don't mean to be seen as unwelcoming. But this will absolutely be, be viewed by, by the village as, as an unwelcoming step if we decide to pass a resolution saying, nah, we, we don't, we don't want anybody else. Because it's just going to add population to our district, which everybody's been saying has been declining in, in, in population. You know, the, the, you know, the, it's not like we're setting, and it's not like we're establishing a precedent here. Because there, there really, there ain't nowhere else to bid, build for the most part in terms of residential.
I, I, and I'm in favor of, of the resolution supporting the TIF. I think we need to look at this sort of generationally and think about it as, you know, potentially it's a short-term cost for a larger potential long-term gain. And I think to me, that's reason enough to support the resolution.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? No? Okay, then I'm going to put the resolution up for vote and bear with me because it's long. I'm going to read it. And whereas pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act 65 ILCS 5/11-74.4-1 at SEC, the act, the village of Mundaline, Illinois, the village is considering the designation of a redevelopment project area known as Oak Creek Town Line Road Redevelopment Project Area TIF 4. And whereas pursuant to the act, the joint review board for TIF 4 has been created, the members of which include representatives of certain affected taxing districts authorized to. the members of which include representatives of certain affected taxing districts authorized to levy taxes within TIF 4 and a public member selected by the other members of the Joint Review Board. And whereas pursuant to the act, the Joint Review Board for TIF 4 convened a meeting in the Village Hall on February 10, 2021. And whereas the Joint Review Board carefully reviewed and considered the public record and planning documents relating to the proposed designation of the boundaries of TIF 4 and the proposed approval of a redevelopment plan for TIF 4, collectively the TIF 4 proposals and draft ordinances approving the TIF 4 proposals. And whereas after consideration of said matters, a joint review board recommended and found by majority vote of its members present that the TIF 4 proposals as presented conform to the requirements of the act. And the president and board of the trustees of the village should approve the TIF 4 proposals and, sorry, scrolled too far. Whereas the Village of Mundaline made a presentation, whereas at the Joint Review Board meeting Diamond Lake School District 76 abstained from the vote to recommend approval in order to obtain additional information regarding the proposed TIF 4. And whereas the Village of Mundaline made a presentation to Diamond Lake School District Board of Education on February 16, 2021 on matters related to the potential establishment of TIF 4 and provided supplemental information. And whereas the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education at its March 16, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting desires to formally approve, formally recommend approval of TIF 4 by majority vote of its members. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education as follows. Section 1 recitals. The faction statements contained in this preamble to this resolution are found to be true and correct and are hereby adopted as part of this resolution. Section 2 recommendation, the Diamond Lake School District Board, 76 Board of Education submits the following advisory non-binding recommendation to the president and board of trustees of the village. The TIF 4 proposals, including the proposed boundaries of TIF 4 and the proposed redevelopment and plan for TIF 4 and substantially the form attached to the Joint Review Board for Oak Creek Town Line TIF 4 resolution approved on February 10, 2021 with Exhibit A, the plan, satisfy the plan requirements, eligibility criteria and objectives of the act for reasons stated in the plan, including the eligibility report included therein. In furtherance thereof, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education recommends that the village president and board of trustees adopt ordinances approving the TIF 4 proposals, including designation of the boundaries of TIF 4, the plan and tax increment allocation financing for TIF 4. This resolution is supplemental to the Joint Review Board's written report required by the act. Severability of any provision of this resolution or part thereof is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction. The remaining provisions of this resolution are to remain in full force and effect and are to be interpreted, applied and enforced so as to achieve as near as may be the purpose and intent of this resolution to the greatest extent permitted by applicable law. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Hauptman?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is approved. Okay, moving on to the, to item D, which is approving the third trimester teaching and learning plan. We already had discussion on this, so I'm going to just move on to the resolution. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the third trimester teaching and learning plan as recommended and presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan? Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. Moving on to item E, which is approving the Chromebook lease agreement. Eric Hansen, I didn't know if you wanted to talk at all about this before we take it up for action.
Sure, sure, let me move the camera here. All right, so we're on our year three of our current lease of our Chromebooks. And their current lease will end in part of preparations of vetting resources that are available for all of our students. And previous board discussion on device capabilities prior to the pandemic, we vetted out several different Chromebook devices to ensure that they have the exact capabilities that that better build to ensure in the next three years that we have a device that is reliable and robust, just in case, even though we're getting out, hopefully getting out of a pandemic, you never know what the future has hold. So my, we vetted out different vendors and demoed a few different devices of, and elected with a Dell 3100 that is built to not only have the same capabilities as where our students have right now, but also have additional, this is a better built within so that it has more ram, a better processor, two cameras, rugged, just like our current devices, so that they withstand the next three years of the current lease. And additionally, because of the pandemic, a lot of this had to be done way ahead of time because there are significant long lead times amongst a lot of school districts that are still trying to obtain devices. So it was important to start this process in a much earlier time of the year and ensure that we have the appropriate device so that we have enough lead time to turn over their devices without losing any traction.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Eric?
Hey Eric, so when would the new lease time begin and how many units would that cover?
Currently we're underneath our lease until the end of the fiscal year, so end of, end of June. So this one wouldn't officially start till July 1. So, and then they'll have the exact same warranty and accidental damage protection that we typically have with our current devices. And we are adding an additional 100 to our current one because we're accommodating first grade. First grade still is not part of our current lease. They are using purchased Chromebooks from four, five years ago. So essentially we're getting first grade through eighth grade on the exact same device so that everybody has a, Chrome is always the same exact experience, but the exact physical experience that they will receive.
Okay, and so the, as far as you talked a little bit there about the oldest units that you have, are you looking to, at some point have, have all the units be within two to three years of age? Or is that not relevant?
I apologize. What we'll have is we'll keep it to a three-year part of our obsolescence planning as we timeline over the. So for Chromebooks, this is taking our first grade through eighth grade all now, instead of having one grade being an outlier, first grade, three, three, having the same exact device for three years. And then add that last year, vetting out several resources, find competitive quotes to ensure that we have the appropriate device for our students as well as price appropriate.
Okay, so if I understand you right, you're going to do a complete refresh of the hardware? Yeah, starting after July, with this lease agreement.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? No. Okay, then we will vote. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the Chromebook lease agreement with American capital at the cost of $339,449.34 as outlined in the memo presented. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Candela?
Yeah.
Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Juan? Yes. Sullivan?
Yeah.
And that motion passes. And that concludes our business agenda for the evening. We will now move on to board discussion. And the item that you have on your agenda for board discussion is looking at renaming the Columbus Day holiday to either Indigenous Peoples' Day or, for example, we have listed here that District 75 just doesn't give that holiday a specific name, it's just a non-attendance day or no school. So I just wanted to get, I know Mrs. Juan raises at the last meeting. I just thought it would be an opportunity for us to discuss that if we would like to change the name of the holiday or just even not name it anything and designate it as a non-attendance day rather than designating it as Columbus Day on the calendar.
I'm all for changing the name. Anyone else is, I mean, I feel like it's kind of, we're a little behind the times, it seems like, actually.
Yeah, and I, I would agree and I, I would, you know, maybe leave it to another discussion of whether, you know, it makes sense to, you know, recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. But for now, you know, until we have that, you know, exchange and exchange of ideas, I'm all for viewing it as a blank holiday.
I would agree. I was looking at some data and, and a number, a growing number of states have renamed that at the state level. A growing number of school districts have made this move. So it, you know, it definitely seems like it would be time.
I would support that. Yeah. In fact, yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're going to, we ought to decide, make a decision on what we want to name it. Otherwise, we're just going to be continually asked what we're, what we're at some point going to end up naming. But like, like Jose said, you know, we don't, we don't have to decide that tonight, but, but I'm in favor.
I'm, I'm curious from like the principals if there is any like unit lessons or anything like that that kind of go along with like the explorer kind of genre linked with Columbus Day? And if it also kind of takes into consideration the Indigenous people?
Yes, at Diamond Lake School, we certainly try to get children to understand why we're going to be off from school. So we'll do a mini lesson, but we just really do try to talk about differences and making sure that the Indigenous, Indigenous people are recognized more than Columbus at that point.
At the intermediate school, it's more of an inclusionary process. It's, it's not just about Columbus. It's about, you know, exploring and the European expansion as it is as a whole.
At the middle school, we use this, actually this kind of debate as one of our students' kind of introductions to argument writing, where they will have a discussion if Columbus was a villain or an explorer. And so the students use that as a great jumping off point, some of their kind of their first exposures to this practice. And I've actually had a number of people come to me, actually talk about this exact holiday and, and its name, if that's relevant and also the discussion.
It'll be really interesting what the, you know, what the students think. Yeah, at least an interesting way.
You know, they certainly could, and we have a principal advisory on that in the future. That could be a good topic for the month to be.
Might be interesting to propose it to like the student council to see if they, you know, when I, I don't know, give some input into changing the name and what, what to change it to.
Yeah, there's definitely some really great opportunities that that could be great. We could definitely look at that as early as even this month, moving forward, because we'll have our next meeting probably on the 16th of April.
And we could always call it Canadian Thanksgiving.
Okay, so it sounds like we're all in agreement that we would like to rename the holiday. And we would like to follow up at a further board meeting to continue the discussion. Okay, then I'm going to move on to freedom of information requests. We had one and it was fulfilled. Under notices and communications, we just have the usual reminder regarding the Board of Education calendar for the school year. And then we also have some SEDOL governing board minutes and their newsletter. I didn't know if anyone had any questions or wanted any discussion on the information from SEDOL. No? Okay, then we will move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? As a reminder, please just type that into the chat box and we will read it into the meeting for you. And we will wait a minute to allow you to have time to do that if you choose. Okay, I do not see any public comments. Then we will move on to others. Under others, we have Board of Education training dates for June 16th and 17th. This is something that I've known I've been discussing and I think all of you know, we're looking at doing kind of a more formal onboarding for new Board of Education members just to make sure that everyone has the training and the resources that they need to get caught up. I know, you know, personally, I can speak from experience and I'm sure all of you have different viewpoints on this, but it can be over-melloming when you join the board, especially if there's, you know, a large number of returning members. Just making sure you have kind of that background information about the district. And you have the, the training from the state as well. And so that's what those two dates are planning on being. Bob, and I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add there?
No, I think you captured it well. And we just sent you the invites last week to save the dates on your calendar. So we'll provide an agenda in more details as the dates get closer and then also as we see our new board members.
Great. And also, you know, we do hope to have actual resources come out of this so that the board will be able to refer back to information. So that should be, you know, a positive benefit. And then also under others is in-person meeting feedback. So I don't know if we want to give feedback on how this evening has gone so far. I can say for the most part, we can hear all of you clearly. It's cut out a little bit. There has been some background noise a little bit, but it's better than I had anticipated. My question for all of you is, can you hear each other? Because I know that when we were meeting in the small gym, a number of us had mentioned that we could not necessarily hear each other distanced, even with the microphones. So I just wondered how the audio sounds to all of you.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think one of the things we talked about earlier is when we're presenting to put our masks down so you can just clearly hear us. And so it doesn't sound muffled, but other than that, how is it for you as far as an audience member? Because this is what we're, you know, projecting for the future is that if the board and the district leadership team are in person, we're going to continue with the Zoom feature for our meetings because it really has participation and attendance.
Yes.
Community in from our staff, it gives them another option to stay involved and be informed. So we're going to continue with the Zoom component of it. How is it for all of you as participants right now, hearing us, seeing us, and then following along with the meeting?
I think it's fine. We just, there has been some cutting in and out, but there has been, I think even on our end, as the board members on Zoom, there's been a little bit in and out of the audio too. So. So overall, at least for me, I was able to hear, I would say, the vast majority of the meeting, fine.
Yeah, I would agree with that, just the administrative team. If you can get, we can maybe test with your microphone, getting it a little bit closer, because I had to turn my volume up, but then when some of the other Zoom speakers spoke, then the volume was that much higher. So something we can, we can adjust. But, and then, John, I think yours was just breaking just a little bit a couple of times towards the end. Not sure what that's for, let me know if mine was breaking. I try to always use these because it's a cleaner connection for me.
Eric, is there a way that you can maintain this system with the sound? Because I think the sound quality is okay, but would there be a way for us to view each person on camera? I kind of miss seeing your beautiful faces and reading some of that. It's very, it's, you guys are very small on the screen, so that's kind of my one, that's the one part that I don't like as much, because I'd rather see your faces.
If you can get a little close-up to them, that would be great, I think that would help.
Well, what I can do is, the system is, it's a little bit different, so I can try to zoom on people like myself or.
Can you get a little closer?
Where the camera is, it's like a three-sixty camera, that's about close. People based on where the camera is. The first time we're utilizing it for the board meeting specifically. We see from your perspective, like as I see everybody's face right here, the only way to be able to mimic that is if we were to be virtual as, same as you, where we're looking at our own.
Could you guys all just join the Zoom, but just stay muted? And then use the sound that you have?
Yes. It is, it's just.
I don't understand what that would be if we were all Zoom and you're in person, I don't, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I think our, our point last time was to bring us all together so there would be that interaction in person, with all of us together before as well as the DLT. But if we were all sitting in one room on Zoom, I don't know if that would really achieve our purpose of being in person.
I think she just means for the audience that's on Zoom, so if we're going to keep Zoom open to the audience, they just can't see you very well.
Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood your question.
The only thing that might require, because we've done that using this room as staff and doing that before, just some coordination with the mutings and the.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Masti feed that, because we've done a couple of IEP meetings in here and trying to do exactly that. It can be done. Otherwise, it gets a little sloppy.
Sure, I mean, I mean, we could try it both ways and see, you know. I agree, though, it's, from this distance, it's kind of hard to see your reaction. So, but overall, I think it, overall, I think it went well. And I, you know, I would thank Eric for the, the time you spent, you know, putting this all together. I think it was helpful, and I know that all of us really do want to get back to the in-person meetings. I think we, as a board, feel that, you know, we're able to collaborate best that way.
So if the board, if the board joins this meeting, are we able to all fit properly distanced in that room that you're currently in?
No.
No?
We don't, we probably, in the Innovation Center, which is right outside, we're, we're in Classroom B right now, which is in West Oak Campus, so it's just one part of the. Last week, had great sound quality, went to the art room to have great sound quality. This is the best location to do it, but it would be a different configuration. We probably wouldn't all be all together. And we wouldn't all be on camera, so it would probably be the board and myself, and then the district leadership team would be at a different, like, spot in the same room. And so if people were presenting, we'd have to have them present maybe at a closer to us and have a podium.
Okay, I, I think the consensus from us is that we would like to try it in person at the next meeting. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Yes? Okay. Excellent, well, that essentially concludes our meeting for this evening. I wanted to, you know, again, reiterate our thanks for all the planning that has gone into getting the kids back to school at all the various stages. And I know this is our last meeting before spring break, so we hope you all have a wonderful break and have some time to relax and recharge, and we look forward to seeing you back in April. So could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Fantastic. Thank you very much. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, everyone.